Okay, back in open session. We have a request from Brenda for some disposal of property. Do you want to elaborate or just the old phones?
We're just getting, we got new phones with that phone system. They brought us new phones and reduced our price. Our new line boards have now taken the place of some old Promethean smart boards. And there's some old projectors that are replaced by the new line boards as well. So she's just seeking permission to liquidate those items.
Okay.
If they have any value, we'll try to paddle them. If they don't, we'll dispose of them.
Okay, that was good. Okay. My stuff, what? Okay. Okay, motion by Gina, seconded by David, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the disposal of the following property: old phones, old projectors, and old Promethean boards. Any other discussion? All in favor? opposed? Motion carried. Five oh. Okay. Next, we have some KASB policy updates.
I will make a mention here if you want to not move on this. I apologize, I did not make copies for you of this. I haven't read this. I thought I would have it done and I don't have it done if you want to push it till January.
Save it for next month.
Till we have time to review it and for you to get copies.
Okay. Table that. Number 10, the 2022-2023 Calendar Committee Report.
Well, I'm excited to share with you some of the thoughts and concepts that went into the calendar that's in front of you. Staff was surveyed, Calendar Committee, people chatted in person or via email numerous different times. And what they are proposing is that we have a later start date and we go later in the year. You'll notice the big...
Not too much later though.
Pardon?
It's not too much later, no.
The big kick here, and it's kind of, there's a lot of districts that have moved to this right now, is you'll notice the week of Thanksgiving is a week off. There, we're making up time. You'll notice also there aren't as many professional development days because we have Wednesday early release where we're taking care of a lot of business that takes, typically takes place on those development days. The student days are increasing by .5. I wanted to increase it more. I think that's what we're here for, is to continue to teach kids. But .5, we can walk into this thing. I will say that the teacher contract days are reduced by four to 180 on this calendar. And my recommendation would be that the calendar in the negotiated agreement be negotiated to state something to the effect of a maximum of 184 days. But accepted calendar days are what applies to the year. It's my recommendation, we don't give up calendar days and then have to negotiate them back in. We currently have those set. This gives us some flexibility. We can go beyond it without negotiating through, but we can go under it. But I, we need to guarantee a level of expectation and then we can go back and forth as the calendar so dictates.
I think it looks good. The wording is in our negotiated agreement. On that. And we're still going to do the early release on Wednesdays? It doesn't matter, as long as we've got the current one in there. White is on it. White is on it. The wording is in the negotiated agreement, but I just cannot remember the exact wording.
I think it has to do with the length of contract is set by the board. I don't think it has a number in it.
Right, yeah. I'm worried I sounded about matching the calendar days or something.
Says it will consist of the days in the approved yearly calendar. A minimum of three professional employee workdays. The contract duty year consists of contact days shall be inclusive of a minimum of three workdays and a minimum of three in-service days.
And there's, is there three workdays, not two? Yep. Very good.
So that I, who, of the approved yearly calendar? The PD days are August, November, and February. And then workdays, there's two in August and...
Two flex days, that's good.
Looking for a yellow. Flex days.
There are no yellows. Those are just...
Reds. Reds are half-day workdays.
Right, and yellows are half-in, half-work. So we'll have any half-halves, but we have...
But the P in workdays, there's one, two, three, four, five reds, which each count for a half-day, plus two purples, which are two more days. So we meet the number of PD days and we exceed the number of workdays on this calendar.
I think it looks good. It doesn't look like we're really going all that much longer.
It's the 18th. It's 19th half-day.
I just sometimes lose those things around to be back.
That's why I think there needs to be agreement that this, this is a year-by-year thing, but I think the board needs to maintain 184 contract day expectation. Actual calendar workdays may vary according to the accepted calendar. And again, you don't have to move on this tonight if, if we want to get some more clarification on language to secure 184 days. That's fine, but in your motion, you should be able to have that as the expectation. We accept this calendar with the understanding that it's an expected contract of 184 days. However pursuant to this contract for this time, we will adopt this calendar.
Claire's fine.
It looks like he said it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or I can get some legalese paragraph if that would be better. There's no super rush on this, you know, it's just to get it out here, get it set so that people understand what it is.
Understand what we were going to do with last month and we pushed it to this month, so...
What I like is the, just the creativity and the, the way the committee worked together to brainstorm. This is about what Admin, this is about the fourth, fourth version as we just talked and massaged and talked and massaged and...
And there was two actual emails and numerous emails and in the years I've been here, it's I think the most collaborative calendar we've had between the committee and Admin. I like it. It looks good. Okay.
Would you like me to lay down some legal on securing 184 days? The maintenance.
Okay, I, I suppose we should probably protect that without having to take two steps forward and three steps backwards. Approve it next month. Okay. But in principle, I, in principle, the hook is...
I will put this out yet.
Okay. In principle, or could be...
Yes.
I think so. I think it looks great. All right. We have some... Incentive for early retirement notification?
Well, as we all know, finding teachers is becoming the new challenge. I would like to propose to you an incentive for retirement notification by January 15. If, if a teacher gives us notice that they are intending to retire by January 15, that we cover the cost for six months of their health care after their group coverage with the district would expire. That would be our Level C single pay, 380, 5687 times six. And the reason for this is we have job fairs coming up, college job fairs. The earlier the notice that we can have, the better our odds of finding staff. So I see this as a minimal expense for the ability to be in a position to react.
Get a jump on it. We've been special to them as well.
Twenty-four, well, it would be very beneficial to them to continue health care.
Yeah. That's a tough thing. I like it.
Now, you know, our employees have the option of staying on our health care, but they wouldn't have, they have to pay the premium out of pocket. This would defer that for six months before they had to pay a premium if they chose to stay on our plan. It's one time, yes. Yes, this is for this year and then we just have to kind of see where the job market is and, and you look at some openings, it's, it's kind of mind-boggling right now how many openings are posted in different areas on KansasTeachingJobs.com. It's, it's getting very, very competitive.
It goes back to the negotiated agreement. Is it February 1st? Is it that early? The early retirement, February 15th?
And that's for the $300 incentive for early notification. That's just cash.
And then they have their early retirement plans.
Right, and the sunset on the early retirement program. And this is just an additional incentive for this year so that we can see where we're going to...
Just to let us know a little sooner.
Or we're going to February 15th. We'll be compensated $300. And I don't know how long it's been $300 and I don't want to sound snide or unappreciative, but in this day and age, that's, that's not...
Not much.
That's not what really sends people running to the gate, $300. So I think, you know, valuing that notification in, in kind of a greater way, I think makes sense. That would still apply.
So I need our district to move forward with this, with the print job, the completion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, David. We have a motion by David, seconded by Deb, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve a one-time early notice incentive for early retirement for certified staff. This notice must be made by January 15th of 2022 from the eligible certified staff member and will equal six months of a single health insurance premium at Option C upon the expiration of regular USD 298 Lincoln Group Health Insurance Plan year benefits. Any other discussion? Clear enough? All in favor? Opposed? Five oh. Okay. Next, we have INA Alert Camera, Door Security. We've been talking with them about cameras mixed up.
INA Alert is the company that we bought our camera servers from, our new camera security software from. And I think, I'm not the only one, Admin Team, it is a, the, the camera functionality right now and the ability to see past footage and current footage is so much more user-friendly than what we used to have.
Absolutely.
And it came from INA Alert. So both buildings have some needs, but right now we have a lot of blind spots at the junior, senior high school. So you did that walkabout, didn't you?
Yes.
So Nikki and myself and a desire from INA Alert walked around the building and we just mapped out where we could move existing cameras and where we could, where we would need to put new cameras to take care of our blind spots. You know, I won't sound arrogant, but the bid is low enough that I can approve this under my authority of spending, but I just wanted everybody to be on the same page and see what you think. To do this camera upgrade at the junior, senior high school is $9,800. Although my SRR funds are starting to see the light at the end, well, not the light at the end of the tunnel, at the end of the tunnel, this is, believe it or not, still qualifying for SRR spending under contact tracing and exposure monitoring. So a lot of things that I'm getting right now, I'm having Emily and Nancy flag and they've started a spreadsheet called Possible SRR Expenses, Additional Curriculum at Risk Items for Remediation. So as I put in applications for this SRR 3 and we finalize SRR 2, I give an application to either and I can ask them, what's on the list that I can, can I throw more on this? Are we going to have the funds? This is something that, that is qualifying right now from the district. The other thing at those, at that building, and again, this is a phase-in thing because both buildings have needs, is the security, the door security system. We currently use FileSafe as our service company.
Right.
They're very expensive. They charge $194 one-way trip charge from Salina. INA Alert could put all of our systems into the same box, if you will, and service them as well. I'm trying to find the name of that because it's hard to pronounce. Avigalone? Avigalone is the camera system. They also can do the door security systems as well, the badge swipes. The, the interface needs some modification from what it currently is, but again, the user-friendly aspect of programming the doors, which we do all the time for events and different things. That is, the door project is another $9,900, $9,920, $37. And again, it's within my spending authority, but I just want you to know where money's going. These are upgrades that unfortunately to maintain facilities, much like the parking lot, if you don't take care of it, you get to a point where it's going to be a major endeavor. So I've worked with this, this guy and we've talked along about, I've been impressed with the company so far with what they were able to do with just our cameras that are existing. And... I saved us some old money in capital outlay last year. I can pull this out of capital outlay. I would recommend if it were just my, simply my decision, which it kind of is, but I want you to be informed, I would go ahead and get these upgrades started for that building.
And then if you can get it paid for by SRR, you will?
If I can get the camera part of it, it will go on my SRR wish list as we work through things.
So then that would all be updated, I mean, current?
Cutting edge.
The high school would be, yeah. Yeah, I understand. What about...
Then possibly next year, we'll see how the year ends up and what we can roll back over into capital outlay at the end of the year and then we can address phasing things in like that. We have blind spots in some places that just aren't really covered well at the elementary school, mostly on the outside. But, but everything is just in need of upgrade. We just have to eat this elephant one bite at a time.
As technology increases, those abilities increase. Okay. So would, would that total bid be those two numbers added together?
It would be.
Is that what we want?
But they are separate bids because they're separate systems.
Okay. So one is for the door security systems and the other is for current additional cameras.
That's door security.
Okay.
And this is camera.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion, anything in favor of both? Both, yeah. Also move. Okay. Second. Yeah, okay. All right. We have a motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the bid of $9,829.20 from INA Alert for the conversion of current cameras and additional cameras and also approve the bid of $9,920.37 for an upgrade of the door security systems through Avigalone Systems. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Five oh. Okay. Principal's report. Packet. Anything you want to add to this?
I just quickly have to add with our early shutdown, and I think I, I mentioned this the other day, but we will move our winter concert to Wednesday, January the 12th, and that will start at 6:00 PM and will stagger the grades and that information will go home to parents as well. It's already also been posted on our live feed on our Facebook page. And then our movie reward day moves to January the 7th, that's a Friday.
Okay. We would like to pass that along. The winter program that was scheduled for this Friday, the 17th, has been moved to January 12th.
Yes.
Is there a time?
K2 students start from 6:00 to 6:45. There's a 15-minute overlap and then pre-five students start from 7:00 to 7:45.
Okay, starting at 6:00 and then progressing, if you would look at our Facebook page, that will give you all the timeline on that. And then on January 7th of Friday, the movie reward for reading has been moved. That'll be at the Finch Theater, so if you send back permission slips, your kids will still get the reward for that. That'll be January 7th of Friday. Okay, thank you.
Just a couple things to add. We will extend our semester week, the week we come back, and that is just to give the opportunity to the kids that need to take finals, to get their grades up. The kids that have earned that they took their final exam won't have to take them. We'll find something else for them to do, but we just want to make sure we give those kids that are borderline the opportunity to still take their finals since that was taken away from them. They'll have that first couple days of study, the teachers will review, and then we'll come out of the plane for that Thursday, Friday. The second thing that's in my, my board report, on our November 11th in-service day, we had the faculty at LJSHS spent quite a bit of time just discussing some issues that we've had with students and discipline, really with cellphones. And the staff has kind of requested that I put together some sort of cellphone policy, which I've included in my board packet. So we are going to implement that in January. It was a great demand basically of our staff that they did it. So I do have a, a better visual for you. The pictures are kind of crazy, so I apologize. But basically what it shows is, these were, basically, teachers did a kind of a study in their classrooms for one hour and how often their kids' cellphones went off. And so you can see two different visuals there at the top. Just how many times they got texts in one hour while it was 30-minute period, how much social media went off, and then any other things. And then the second one shows, it's more detailed, email, Snapchat, Facebook, text messages, phone calls, Instagram. And in that cellphone policy that I gave you, I, I included some statistics on the second page. I probably spent the last, I don't know, two or three weeks just researching cellphone distraction in the classroom and how much it impacts student learning. We have had one teacher who already took cellphones out of their classroom and what they did, they had, they're kind of like shoe pockets, calculator pockets, where they come in, they have to put them in. And when they started this process, every kid's grade went up after they did this. So it's, it's, it's at the point where it's something that we have to do. Those cellphones are definitely a, can be, a learning tool in the way of life today. There's just too many kids that cannot control the temptation to check it every time it buzzes on their table or in their pocket. So I think one of the staggering statistics from this is that it takes 23 minutes to refocus every time your phone goes off. And on average, the kid's phone goes off every five minutes, they're never focused. So this is the baby steps. There was discussion about the pouches with our staff, about buying the pouches. I just don't want to invest in that kind of money yet if we can, if this process will work. So what we did, I think we had to buy 12 of those pockets, calculator pockets for the classrooms. They cost about $10. So we're in, $150. And if that works, then this will be fantastic. I'll be sending a, a video home over break for the parents just to give them a warning because if they, kids have them, they're going to have to pick them up. That's kind of part of the, the punishment. There are some other things that we have. We've had some issue with bathroom problems and it had to do with cellphones. Probably 80%, and so I went back through my discipline referrals and about 80% of them had to do with phones. Whether it was bullying, inappropriate pictures on the phones, Snapchat groups, just not, they're just not, they're not, they're not a educational tool right now. So this is the, we're going to try this and see if it works and if it doesn't, we'll try something else. We're going to implement that in January we come back. I was hoping to tell the kids before they left, but guess we'll have a meeting when we come back. And a few other things, we've had some issues in the locker room, we've kind of implemented that, that's changed. We've had some issues with bathrooms, so we've kind of done that. So there'll be kind of a slew of new rules that we're going to try and implement and make it a better learning environment, so...
That's good. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, guys.
So we've received our new and updated wind tower check of $127,000, which should continue for the next five years after this one. So if you remember our work, our workday meeting at the high school, we had talked about phasing some of that money into some of our needed capital improvements that really we can't particularly find in general fund right now. So I would like to move ahead on getting bids for those south-facing windows that we talked about. I got one bid for $35,000. I've got another company that I've reached out to that's out of Fort Scott. I don't know if they'll come this far, but I'd like to go through the request for proposal process and then bring to use of bids for approval. I don't know if you necessarily have to approve me getting bids to the...
We can let them, let them pay for the right bids.
They can let, okay. I'd also like to start working with some companies on that high school parking lot so that we're good to go the day after school's out, somebody's ready to come in and fix that issue. So those are a couple of things coming up. And we give you a HVAC update on the gymnasium. The units are scheduled to be delivered by the end of this month. The pads are poured, they're running electrical lines to it right now, and ductwork is being fabricated out at the shop and some of it is already installed in the metal shop and we're already getting that ductwork. Hangers are up there ready to put the ductwork on, so we're moving along there. We do have the North Direct Fire unit shut down completely because they put the new ductwork in. It's not extremely... It's not extremely comfortable with one direct fire, but nobody's gonna get frostbreathe. It's warmer than my house, I'll tell you that. But I think the last game, it got into the mid-sixties on the north side of the gym, but the south one is, is providing all heat to that part of the facility right now, but it'll be fine. It'll be fine. You know, I was kind of excited about an idea of moving to LED lights and saving electricity given where our usage was. So the company out of Oklahoma, Oklahoma LED was here last week and they did a, last week, and they did a complete audit of every light fixture and every light bulb in every building that USD 298 owns. I'm waiting on those results, but let me show you something exciting. Have you noticed a decrease in light right here where we're sitting?
Charles seems out.
So previous to this meeting, we had 16 light bulbs up there, 16 fluorescent T8 light bulbs pulling 32 watts of energy each. So we had 128 watts per fixture times four fixtures, 512 watts. There are currently two LED hybrid bulbs in each fixture for a total of eight bulbs. So eight bulbs replaced 16 and 104 watts of energy replaced 512 watts of energy. And other than John, nobody is noticing the darkness up here. So this is the kind of things that I think we need to continue moving towards. When we get that audit back, I can go through and cut out all the fluff. What I really want to do is just buy stinking light bulbs and replace them. I don't need anything fancier than that. But if we can reduce our fluorescent light usage by that much, we might be able to see some significant savings in electricity. Another thing that we have to do is we have to get much more diligent on lights being on district-wide. When we're talking about $10,000 a month plus in utility bills, everybody's gonna have to pitch in if this is gonna work. Now, you might be able to leave them on for a little bit with LED and we'll still be okay, but I don't know that we can go the entire expensive motion sensor on, off in a classroom in very up-to-date in new schools, that's what they're putting in. So if there's nothing moves for five minutes, the lights go out, that would be nice, but I don't think we're in a position to do that. I think this is a quick win and when I start getting prices together, I'll share those with you, the results of that audit. So that to me was exciting and I like that we can go down to two bulbs and then affect it in one bid. Five-year warranty on the bulbs. That's all I got.
In an excited place, any others? Let us know if you learn anything on windows or... All right, and that brings us to 15, executive session for students. Okay, 15 minutes, seven minutes or two. Call this a 16. Okay. 15, 18, 19. Somebody want to move?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Patty and Gina, is Nikki standing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion by Patty, seconded by Gina. Motion by Patty, seconded by Gina, that the USD 298 Board of Education go into executive session at 8:16 PM for 15 minutes with the superintendent and principal Nikki Flynn for the purpose of discussing matters adversely or favorably affecting a student or students, and that the board return to open meeting at 8:31 in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of student or students who is identifiable under coma. Any discussion in favor? Post? Five oh.